Good evening and welcome. I'm Kate Carrigan, I'm president of the Legal Women Voters at Coos County. And we're very glad you're here this evening. And the League is a nonpartisan political organization encouraging the informed and active participation of citizens in government. It influences public policy through education and advocacy. We never endorse candidates or political parties, but we love doing candidate forms. So, our moderator this evening is Crystal Shojin. And she will introduce the candidates, and we're looking forward to hearing from all of you. I'll tell you a little bit about the agenda tonight. From six to seven twenty-five, that's an hour and fifteen minutes, we will have questions from the League and the audience. And the first question, which is about experience or why you're running for the board, is one point five minute, or two minutes, and then all the rest of the questions, one point five minutes. The closing statements will be two minutes, and then we will have a conclusion and a thank you from the League. And at that point, we will be over. And at this point, or the, we won't be over, the forum will be over. At this point, I'll read the candidates that are running for the different positions, starting on my left. And, um, this is position two. And for position two, Deanne Wyden, 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 is here tonight. But Mary Schilling did not respond to any outreach from the Legal Women Voters for this forum. Both have posted information about their campaigns on Vote 411. So you can look for more information there. Deanne Wyden, Wyden, is currently a stay-at-home mom with a bachelor's degree in fisheries and wildlife from Oregon State University. She has worked as a seasonal wildlife technician and a recreation technician for the Forest Service. Position four. The next person, well, there are two candidates running for position four. Megan Kronsteiner Cahill and Dallas. Danbury. Okay, thank you. Megan Kronsteiner Cahill is here tonight and has posted more information on her campaign. And he did not respond to invitations to sit for an interview. Thank you, okay. Megan Kronsteiner is a graduate of North Bend High School with a bachelor's degree and a J.D. from the University of Oregon. She works as an adjournment. Moving on, position five. For position five, the candidates are Julie Hale and Jim Jordan. Both are here tonight. Both have also posted information about their campaign on Vote 411. Julie Hale is a stay-at-home mom who has many years of experience in the veterinary field and was a preschool teacher for two years. She attended Lenore Community College in North Carolina, majoring in fine arts. Jim Jordan is a retired petroleum engineer with a bachelor's degree in petroleum engineering from the Uso, University of Texas at Austin. He is married to a retired public school teacher and the father of two graduates of North Bend schools. He currently serves on the North Bend School District Board and coached the boys' tennis team for several years. Position six. The two candidates for position six are Anna Hewitt and Julie Thies. Both are here tonight, and Anna Hewitt has posted more information about her campaign on Vote 411. Anna Hewitt is the mom of four North Bend Bulldogs. She has fourteen years of nonprofit experience in Coos County, which has taught her that board work is a collaborative effort. She currently sits on two boards and volunteers as a casa. Julie Thies, at the end, was raised in Coos County and has lived in North Bend for twenty-three years. She is a graduate of Kokil High School and currently sits on the North Bend School Board. She is a unit support specialist at Bay Area Hospital. At this time, we'll go into the question period. And we have to start three questions from the Legal, or yeah, three questions from the Legal Women Voters. And then we will go into the question from the audience. So, this first question is a two-minute answer. That's the most you get for any question. Why are you running for the school board? And we're going to start down here with Deanne Wyden.
Um, I am at the beginning of my daughter's school journey. She is a toddler. She's going to be in the school system here in a couple of years. So we are in this for the long haul. We're going to be in North Bend, in the North Bend Public School Systems for a good, long time. I want to help the schools provide the best education and experience they can provide for not only her, but all of the children in our community. Education is very important to me, as I have two associate's degrees from SLAWK and my bachelor's degree in fisheries and wildlife. Education is important. I feel it, um, an educated future is an important future. Um, I want to be involved. I want to be available, and above all, I want to have meaningful engagement with my peers to make informed, information-based decisions about our public schools. I want to increase graduation rates and attendance, and I want to be a strong voice for local families in our community.
Megan Kronsteiner Cahill.
I'm running for the North Bend School Board because I have two children that are, one is third grader at Hillcrest, and my daughter, she started kindergarten there this coming fall. And I'm from here, I'm a product of the North Bend School District. I, um, I went Sunny Hill, North Bay, at the time, North Bend Junior High and North Bend High School, and I got a great education. I'm invested in this community, and I was really happy that I come back home and I'm going to raise my kids here, and it's been a great experience. Um, I, I want to make sure that, you know, my, my kids and all the kids in our area, they have the opportunity to have a great public education. I think that public schools are important, and it's important that we have people that are, um, that are taking care and making sure that we're going the correct path and that this is an available opportunity for all our kids. I was also a member of the strategic planning team for the North Bend School Board just over this last fall and through the winter. And I got to learn a lot about what was going on in our schools. Um, there's a lot of great things they're doing, and I met a lot of great administrators, teachers, and other staff that I was just very impressed with. But I also saw some of the struggles that we're having, even since COVID, that haven't improved to where we would want them to be. Um, we're still way behind in reading and math. District-wide, less than half the students are meeting grade-level progress. Um, so that, that is one of the big things that I really want to focus on and hope to find drastic improvements. The other thing is attendance is an issue too, and so I have a lot of ideas, and I know that they've already started trying to boost our attendance, but, district-wide, still, there's like thirty percent of the kids are not showing up for at least ninety percent of the school year. And the last thing that I care about that we see in this community especially is the lack of trust in our public school system. And I really want to restore that trust so that people feel comfortable and confident sitting their kids to our schools, the way it's done.
Julie B. Hale.
I am a mother of four, and I have wanted to get involved in serving the community for a long time. My children are finally at ages where that is possible. Um, and I am very passionate about special education and looking out for kids who are vulnerable or who struggle. Um, two of my four children have learning disabilities, and getting them on an individual education plan was life-changing for them. They are progressing so much better than they were. They have more confidence. And I've also gotten to know a lot of parents of children who also receive help at school, whether it's IEP, five-of-doors. And I want to be proactive in protecting those programs and protecting those children, because all children, no matter what disability, what background, what struggles they have, they deserve an equal opportunity to receive a good education. And also to show up to school and feel safe and know who the adults are who are helping them. Um, feel confident that they can accomplish their work. And I also, uh, want to help children who come from families who struggle with poverty. Um, I think most parents would agree that children who are anxious or come to school with an empty stomach, those, that is not a good foundation for learning. And meeting a child's basic needs, um, safety, shelter, food, um, will really help lay the correct foundation to build an education on. So ideally, when they grow up, they stay in our community, and they are our police officers, our teachers, our torturers. And that is not only investment in children, but it's an investment in our community.
Jim Jordan.
Jim Jordan. Thank you. I received a great public education growing up in suburban Nespica, New York, that provided a foundation for me for future education for my chosen career in engineering. I want to see my neighbors and all students in our community get a strong foundation for future accomplishment in college, career technical education, trades, or the military. I think that with the right education and training, you can get a job that allows you to live your dreams. I also want to influence education in North Bend. I want students to be challenged and interested in coming to school. And I want to make sure that the North Bend School District has a wide variety of offerings to keep students engaged. And this includes academic programs, music, career technical education, esports. And I'm also retired. I want to go ahead and spend some time, uh, serving the community and giving back. And I'm going to go back and talk a little bit about introducing myself a bit. So, I'm married to my wife, Adrian, for thirty-four years. Uh, she is a retired public school teacher. She taught both special ed and regular education. I'm the father of three children. All of them went on to Oregon State, got degrees. Two of them, we've been blessed, have come back to live in this town. And I just want to say I'm invested in North Bend. I worked thirty-four years in the oil industry, primarily in engineering and operations roles. Nineteen years were working in foreign locations. Those included Papua Guinea, Kazakhstan, China, and Angola, West Africa. I worked successfully on projects with people in diverse cultures. And the key to that was treating people with respect.
Anna M. Hewitt.
I'm an outgoing introvert, meaning this forum is not for me, so forgive me if I stumble. Uh, as a parent, I will do this for it to be the best it can be. I believe we need to see a culture shift. We need students to feel safe, supported, connected, and valued. We need buildings that invite people to do the work. I want to be part of the work that is responsible in helping to mold that. During recent strategic planning, um, we were told that kids see bullying as a big issue in our district right now. And not in exception, staff, educators, my four boys, and all our children deserve a safe and encouraging environment to learn in. They deserve the opportunity to excel and reach their full potential. Another reason I want to be on the school board is to make sure that it is promoting access across student groups and schools. This starts with meeting all students where they're at regardless of their differing needs. I want to see more CRT programs built. I've seen that they've been successful for my family and my children with, with needs. I have so much experience collaborating with others in the community. Work gives special skills that I have built during the past fourteen years. I have the diplomatic personality to do the work, and I can often understand the different perspectives. I believe in fairness, these core values are beneficial when hard decisions need to be made. I also am data-driven and not afraid to do the research before decisions are made. I want to assist in the work that sets our district up for success. I want my boys to grow up in a district where every child that comes to the door can have their needs met and excel.
Julie Thies.
Hi, um, I have lived in Coos County my whole life. I was born and raised in Kokil. I've lived in North Bend for twenty-three years. I raised my four kids here in North Bend from kindergarten to graduation. And I'm, thank you. And I'm very proud, um, to be part of this amazing district as a parent and community member, and as also as a current, uh, board member. To take, in today's society being involved is starting to actually matter, and it's showing up with some of the leftist voices that might not take in vote consideration, other people and their views. In Oregon, I recognize that our voices are not being heard. As an elected board member, I will represent the community and our local position to maintain closest control, to have most control over the governance in our community for our schools. Our tax dollars are funded, um, funding nearly every piece of the budget here, and so our entire community needs to be representative, represented on the board. I am involved with the Coos County Republican Central Committee here in our area and have met many people along the way, including our representative, Boomer Wright, who has visited many times to communicate with our board, and we can, um, bring our issues to him to take to save. Having these types of relationships facilitates communication and connections to allow Zayn to hear our needs of this small rural, rural community struggling to make ends meet with the finances available to us provided by our taxes. I will continue with the work started by the current board and my running mates, Jim, Mary, and Dallas. And the skills I have are being able to ask the tough questions, getting straight to the point, and press for clear, direct answers. I've been told by many people that they know that I ask questions, most people prefer not to.
Okay, for the second question, we're going to start with Megan Kronsteiner Cahill. And we will go all the way around, and we'll continue this way so that everybody has a different place in answering every time. So the question is, number two, what relevant skills and experience would you bring to the school board? One point five minutes for the reply.
Okay. Um, well, part of my education, um, I'm a trainee with law school, so I spent about three years really, so I spent about three years really working on my critical thinking skills, and I got really accustomed to reading long, dry materials and being able to take them in and understand them. Um, also, I, I have not served on many boards, but I am legal counsel for another board of the special district, so I attend board meetings twice a month. And so I'm very intimately familiar with the going on with working in some special district boards and some of the pressures and how to deal, um, with public and different stakeholders in our community. Um, I also know a lot about public meeting, public meeting laws and public record laws. Um, but really, the, the main skills I think I, I bring to the position is my passion for kids. Um, all my volunteer work is really centered around either children or education. Starting in high school, I volunteered for the SMART program, Start Making a Reader Today, and I did that as a high school student. Um, when I was a new lawyer, I volunteered for the imprint program where they put us up with another student family, wrote, like, red books and wrote letters, and pen pals back and forth. Um, one of the best things I did also, um, is for about four years, I volunteered as a CASA, and I helped four kids in our community, and that is like a service that is direly needed, and I can hardly wait till I reach my retirement age to have more time to dedicate myself to that again. Um, also, I am a very open and reasonable person. I don't think I know everything. Um, I admit that to everyone, except possibly my husband. And, um, yeah, thank you.
Okay, number.
Julie Hale. Julie B. Hale, thank you. Um, so my background in veterinary work, I did everything from veterinary technician work to surgery assistance, to reception work, to marketing. It was a, a great way to learn a variety of skills, especially when it came to dealing with clients and the public. Um, the last few years of working in a veterinary clinic, before I became a stay-at-home mom, I worked at an emergency clinic, which is, there are no fun, cute, puppy appointments at an emergency clinic. It's all people walking in, they're exhausted, they're stressed out, they're worried about money, they're mad, angry, eh, all the whole variety of emotions. And I learned how to calm people down, to reassure them, to make sure that I was transparent with the information that I had, to help them feel confident in a plan to move forward. And as a mother of four, I do the same thing. You get yelled at, you get fussed at, you have to make compromises, and you have to be willing to work with your child to come to a conclusion. I am respectful and, um, appreciative of people who are very passionate about their beliefs and opinions. I think that is a good thing to honor your integrity. However, when we are serving on a school board, it's so important that we are willing to look at issues with an objective, unbiased eye, to compromise and come to a middle ground to move forward, because if we're making no progress, then our children are not progressing, and we do not want them to be left behind or to be left out. Um, and when they grow up, they know that they had a solid community who respected everyone and all the children, no matter what their background was. So I hope that those are qualities I can bring to the board.
Jim Jordan.
So I worked thirty-four years in the oil industry, engineering operations, and supervisory roles. These assignments required a fairly high level of leadership, communication, project management skills. It was often in countries that, you know, we were speaking different languages. Communication aspect is invaluable, and I used, utilized this experience and skills in the decision-making process. Uh, we also, we were, we were drilling wells and, and re-completing them, and we always had a budget, and we had to work within that budget, and we were able to count for that budget. Uh, I did get to work with folks in many different cultures, much more diverse than this one, and it, it was a real pleasure. And, you know, one thing I saw in all cultures, treating people with respect works, and it gets them to respond in a favorable way. I also got to work in a contract group, uh, for two years, doing bidding, evaluating the bids, negotiating the contracts, and managing multimillion-dollar, uh, well-construction contracts. Spent three years on a team that, that traveled, uh, and visited my company's sites domestically and internationally, and evaluated how they were doing our business, and standardized best practices and looked for gaps for us to improve. And I also did two years as a hiring manager, which was a lot of fun, hiring people that worked on the drilling.
Anna M. Hewitt.
I became a stay-at-home mom when my child required me to stay home due to his hospital infections. Um, he has autism, he has a disability, so I get to stay home with him now instead of being a clinical manager, which is what I did for years before that. Um, in my time while he's in school, I get to be an active community member and a CASA. And believe me, being a CASA is really difficult sometimes. Uh, I have served on many boards and held many positions, including chair. Um, the largest board I chaired was thirty members. And I've worked following strategic plans and mission-driven work. Uh, I facilitate strategic planning sessions, so I'm very aware of the work that gets done. Board work isn't always the stuff that people think. We're not always making those key decisions as much as compromising, collaborating, researching, clearing out the details. Uh, I'm known in our community for advocating for children with differing needs. I'm often in the school volunteering. I've been involved in PTO sports, booster clubs. Uh, staff who work with my four children know that I enter, working as a team mentality. I never just go in and kind of bulldoze. I know that we can grow a plan together. I have a vested interest in the district, and I have the experience to help me be an active, engaged, and responsible board member.
Julie Thies. If you could repeat the questions? Question is, what relevant skills and experience would you bring to the school board?
I've currently sat on the board for, um, four years now. Um, so we've gone through a lot of board training. There's no real requirements to meet except for being, um, a resident of the city that you're, um, in, the district, for at least a year, and be a registered voter. Those are the only two requirements. So the skills that I've developed, I've developed being on the board through the trainings and job experience. So, for anybody out there that might be nervous about trying to get on the school board and thinking that you have to be some, um, pressure of skills, abilities, you don't necessarily have to have that stuff to be on the board, so, yeah.
Deanne Wyden.
Um, I have spent about six years at the head of the board, sort of, a lot of it working with the public. Um, I have a lot of experience explaining policies to people with very different needs. Um, I have a lot of experience researching those policies because you have to know what we were talking about to explain them to the public. Um, I've gotten great at explaining rules and regulations that people do not want to hear and helping them understand why the policies are the way they are. Um, I am passionate about our children. They are the most important aspect of our future. They're our future doctors or future lawyers, but they're also our future plumbers and our future electricians. Our power goes out all the time out here, and we need people leading line men, working the power lines. Like, education is important. They're future community members, and we want to do the best that we can to keep them in this community. And I feel like that providing this quality education, making them feel like they are part of this community is very important to keeping them.
Thank you. We have a new question, and we will start with Julie B. Hale. And the question is, if elected, how much time would you invest in visiting the schools?
So, as I mentioned before, uh, two of my four children require, um, special needs while they're at school. My son Jonah, who is nine, um, he is autistic and ADHD. And we have a system that every single morning, I walk him all the way into North Bay, to his classroom, sit him down, and, and go back out. I love the schools. I've gotten to know a lot of the staff at North Bay. They have been such a vital, uh, support system for, for me and for Jonah. Um, I would love to have opportunities to volunteer at school events, um, to go be in classrooms, to observe. Of course, I would want the teachers to volunteer to be one of those. I'm not trying to make the teachers' life any harder. But I would love to have maybe a monthly meeting with the principal, or as often as they, you know, may want to chat with me about the issues they're having. And I would want to find ways to get feedback from the teachers and the parents. Um, the teachers and the parents and those, the adults that are in those children's life every single day in, day out, meeting their needs, they know firsthand what is working and what is not working. So that's who I want to sit with, that's who I want to be around, because that's the best information that I can have as a board member to strengthen the things that are working, to tweak the things that are not working, or to completely revamp things that aren't working at all.
Jim Jordan. If elected, how much time would you invest in visiting the schools?
Yeah, I've visited all the schools, uh, multiple times. I enjoy going to, uh, musical performances, the drama dogs, fundraisers. Um, I'm a big fan of our career technical education plans or programs that we have here. I really like, uh, the construction trades. I think that's a great opportunity for our students. Um, not everybody wants to go to college, and, uh, so you can do very well in this town if you become a skilled electrician or plumber. So I'm a big supporter of that. You know, those, and also, I guess, on the CTE, those students that, that take career technical education courses have a higher graduation rate than those that don't. So I'm really, really enamored with that. I enjoy getting out and meeting our teachers and classified staff. And, uh, also, I, I get a lot of feedback and input from, uh, different, uh, parents. And a lot of times, their, their comments and input, and I have to be an active listener and listen, you know, will, will discuss as a board, and, um, sometimes it influences our policy, so.
Anna M. Hewitt. I currently already am in the schools a lot. The one school in the district that I don't spend a lot of time in is Hillcrest, and I'm really curious about Hillcrest because during strategic planning, we got to see some testing results, and I'd love to know what they're doing because some of the testing scores really show that they're doing something differently, or there's a reason why. So that's one that I would want to spend more time in. Uh, I currently already, um, go to all the welding, like, certificate, like, when they get their, their awards, even when it's at that much, I'll be there. And when they go to the sports events, when there's sporting events, you'll often find the soccer game or, uh, it's a at a soccer game or uh tomorrow at the girls' football game. Um, I was excited because the superintendent invited each of us in if we had any questions for the guys who haven't done board work. And one of the things that he told us is that we do get a chance to have meetings with the principals and do work sessions and ask the important questions. And while I think that that's probably the most important because speaking with admin is probably the way that you're going to get, you know, the information that they want to give you, I also would love to have a chance to speak with the staff um and get out to all the different schools.
Julie Thies.
Can you repeat the question again?
If elected, how much time would you invest in visiting the schools?
Um, I've been to several events at the schools. Um, and I continue to continue the pattern that I have, which is not every event, but a few, the select ones. I don't necessarily go into the schools to do much inside anymore because my kids are all grown and gone. So I do have selective events I go to. Um, I do have staff members that I talk to sometimes just through personal relationships. So developing a relationship with the staff. And it's helpful to be able to get inside of what's going on and um bring that to discussions when we have work sessions and stuff.
Deanne White.
Um, I I want to be proactive in interacting with staff, admin and parents. Um, I want to have listening sessions or coffee to hear from them. I want to hear their opinions. I want to hear their concerns. I want to hear what they think is going well and I want to hear what they think is going poorly and how we can adjust. Um, the staff and admin, they're there. They know what's happening in the schools. I feel like hearing from them is important to feel like how we can help their lives be better. Um, I really want to be available and active in the school systems. My husband is super supportive of me. We've got our daughter in part-time daycare and so my mornings are free. If there's a principal's got a morning free and he wants to have a conversation, I am absolutely available to do that. I'm available to check out the schools. Um, and then even if it's something later in the day, my husband is really supportive of me during all of this. And so he's there for me. He'll come home early for more if he has to. He's happy to support me in these endeavors. He also feels like education is really important and happy to see me putting myself out here and um doing this for our future daughter, future energy.
Megan Kronsteiner Kegel.
Um, I I currently volunteer at my son's school um a bit, wearing a parent hat. I um I volunteered on each of his field trips. So I'm from kindergarten. Now I'm signed up to only third grade one this year. Also done in-class activities. Um, so I feel pretty familiar with Hillcrest. Um, I also coach his um third, fourth grade soccer team. So I I talk to a lot of parents and system the students that way. I've been doing that now for a number of seasons. I think it's in my fourth or fifth season doing that. Um, but then, you know, putting on my board hat is I got this terminology from talking to the events, the superintendent, um, trying to decide like, am I still going to be able to volunteer in my class as a board member? Because there are certain restrictions where you don't want to blur lines. He told me that that would be okay. Um, but one of the things I'd like to do is visit all the schools. We spent a lot of time working on strategic strategic plan for the next five years. And I want to see all these policies play out. We're trying to implement a lot of strategies to improve the graduation rate, to improve um skills in um reading and math and social um emotional skills. And so I would like to be able to take the opportunity to go into all of our schools, um, speak with staff and teachers and see how these policies are being implemented and whether they're working or not.
Okay, we have a new question. We will give this to Jim Jordan first. This is for all the candidates. When there are complaints about books in the classroom or library, is it important for the North Bend School District to have a policy for handling those complaints? And for the school board to follow the policy? Do you want that read again?
Yeah, I really want it.
It's got two parts to it. When there are complaints about books in the classroom or library, is it important for the North Bend School District to have a policy for handling those complaints? And for the school board to follow the policy?
It's always, you're always have to follow the policy. Um, yeah, there is, you know, we have a complaint policy. It's policy K L. And it's usually handled uh at the school level first. So if there was a complaint at the high school, the high school principal would get that and they would talk to whoever filed the complaint and do some research. Um, and then that that would, if it was resolved at that level, it would end there. However, if the complainant did not like uh the outcome, they can appeal it. It would get appealed with the superintendent. Same same story. Uh, if the superintendent supported the principal, um, and the complaint didn't like it, they could uh appeal it to the board and some things make it to the board. Uh, specific to books in the library, um, I don't know that there's a specific policy for that. Uh, but that complaint would just pretty well follow uh what what I just outlined there. And I guess, uh, you know, with respect to our different libraries in our different schools, there is absolutely age appropriate content that should be in there. There may be some things that should, thank you.
Anna Hewitt. Well, the biggest part of board work is going to be policy and procedure and knowing how that works. So of course, a complaint is going to go through a um process. Uh, personally, I review what my child reads and I know some topics aren't for every child. However, this is one of those things where standards are set elsewhere. So um it's not a decision that I'm going to get to make unless you go through the process and then you come before us and there's some sort of conversation that has to happen at this level. I think, you know, I'm not an educator. It's not my expertise. If a parent doesn't want a book there, there's also other ways. We follow policy once you bring it to us. But also, I find that all the educators in our district, I mean, we're talking about younger kids. There was a book I didn't want my son bringing home and she just didn't want to check it out of the library. It was pretty simple for me to have a conversation and work with her to make sure that happened. But honestly, I think that we just follow the rules and we go by policy and procedure.
Julie Thies.
I think the book question is um being brought up because there's been issues about books across the nation and in our district. Um, so. The the books that are being questioned, if there's a problem with them, what needs to happen is to follow the policy. There is policy for in the district for that. You take the book and you address it with first either the teacher or the principal and then the superintendent. And if it isn't handled, it doesn't come to the board. We don't nitpick the books that are in the libraries or um anything. Uh, we do, I believe that there are books that are age appropriate and the places that they should or shouldn't be, should be determined by the community and the families. Um, and then that's where I come in as a representative, if it comes to board to take care of that. Then we have to follow the policy and um go through that book and with that time. Um, I think the the books that might be an issue are that I don't believe would be in the school. I don't think they have a place in the school. There's the public library that they can be available. So I think there's a difference between um books being available in the school versus books, books being available in the public library. And I don't have a problem with it being in the public library, not the school sometimes.
Deanne White.
Uh, so pretty much what everybody said, the schools do take parents' concerns seriously. There is a review process. You go through with the principal. Um, and they set up the review to review what material you think your um children, child should be reading or review what you think should be in the school library. Um, and then it's the school board's job to uphold the policy. So whatever is decided, the school board is, it's their job to uphold it. Um, we can't make that decision after the review process. Um, and that's about it. Pretty easy answer.
Megan Kronsteiner Kegel.
Um, yes, I think I think we have to follow the policy. I mean, you have to, you have to be consistent and make sure that, you know, you're not putting a bias on anything that comes in front of you and what the policy has and what's been agreed to, that we're gonna follow that clearly, transparently and consistently. And if the issue of the policy, that is what we change, but we're gonna follow that.
Julie Hale.
Yeah, I echo a lot of what's been said already. Um, I I as a parent, I understand how important it is for you to feel that your children are receiving the type of education and the type of materials that you're comfortable with. And so uh I recently had the opportunity to uh speak with the superintendent. And this was one of the questions I asked him and he told me there was a review process. And he gave me a great online resource, the um Oregon School Board Association website that has all this information available, so I can go ahead and start learning about those different policies. Um, I I am committed to upholding the district's policies and and protocols for these situations and to making sure that their parents feel like they have the opportunity to express their concerns and that they feel heard. Um, and that the board members genuinely care about helping that parent and that child with their education. Um, and we ultimately, we are bound to uphold the law, both district and at state levels.
Okay, we have a new question. Um, Anna Hewitt. The question will be for everybody, of course. What are the most pressing challenges facing the district and how would you address them?
Oh, I think that question will be possible. Uh, we must watch our enrollment numbers. This is a factor in our budget. Um, we're seeing a decline in enrollment. I believe that part of the issue um that we're facing is I'm so bored that I can't get close to my. Um, I believe that uh part of the issue we're facing is culture. And some some kids, if they don't feel welcomed, encourage value, they won't attend. They either do inter-district transfers, alt ed, or just have poor attendance. We see dropout rates. So I think that one of the biggest things is is that we deal with bullying and get the culture to change so that the district can have a better attendance so that we're not seeing um the decline in enrollment. We're still going to see some. We have, you know, decreasing birth rates. There's some other um factors, but we need to watch that. And so uh I really think that culture piece is going to help that because having safe, happy children in their seats is number one to get attendance up. I also think we need to help with retention and if we work on those behaviors with that culture, in my opinion, the culture shift will help um with retention. I think behaviors that are hard for everybody and that potentially that could help too. So those are the biggest things that I think I would want to work on.
Okay, Julie Thies.
Sorry, can you repeat the question?
Yes. What are the most pressing challenges facing the district and how would you address them?
I think the most challenging thing that we are facing right now is um the the budget, but we've got a great team and and admin office that um works with, works well with the board to direct funds where it's necessary. The problem is being where um the state, I don't understand why they're not giving us more money than they are. Um, that's one of the biggest things is they're not giving the schools as much money as they should be. There's tax dollars that are not being used properly or just into other different things. Um, so we'll see the financial is the most difficult thing to face because we have declining enrollment. And how to face that and and fix that, I I'm not sure there. The other one is um behavior for students. And we've addressed that with um policies and implementing new processes to help the teachers and support them, hired staff to support the the teachers with behavior and implemented things like that.
Deanne White.
Um, I think the two biggest problems to me, um, my um other folks running have also said this, but enrollment and attendance and a budget, um, I feel like are very big priorities that we need to have in the upcoming future. Um, and attendance is really important. That's how schools get their money. Um, enrollment is important. And so I want to work on ways to get children excited about school again. Um, I I love school. I did honors. I did AP classes. I was very excited about sciences. I was very excited about literature. Um, and I had teachers that brought that excitement about. And I just, I really want to see and find programs that will help children to get excited about school again. Um, we need to find ways to improve the parents' faith in the school system so they'll start bringing their kids back to school because parents are like, bring the kids to school. Um, and I'm running out of time, so I guess that's about it.
Megan Kronsteiner Kegel.
Well, one of my four priorities for the school district is really raising those um reading and math scores. Um, we can't have kids that aren't able to test at grade level. I want all the kids to be able to do that. And district-wide, it is less, it's less than ten out of twenty last year we're meeting those goals. Um, so there's a lot of ideas regarding that. Some is this great, um, North Bay started a new prepaid program called Biddy Bulldogs and they even added a second class here, um, just I think it was like last March. And that is huge for the kids starting kindergarten is to have a foundation and understand how to just behave in class and just to start with learning. So the more we can expand that, the better. And I believe that that's grant funded too, which is great. Um, there's other things that we were doing that we just have to keep pushing forward on and get more of. The other is professional development for the teachers, instructional coaches. That's uh really that is important way of increasing learning in the schools. What it is, is helping teachers learn how to teach to all these, all these different methods so the students are engaged and that they learn. And that's really important. Lots of dividends. Um, I also tutoring, intensive, high-quality tutoring for students that are behind. You know, we we have some of that, um, with Title I for reading, but we need to expand it more so it reaches more children um to make sure that they're doing that of reading and math. Um, attendance is another big thing. I mean, if the kids are not in school, how are they learning? I mean, if they're missing one day a week, that that's not enough to get these concepts down. So we want to target some approaches to make sure um the parents understand.
Julie Hale.
Um, I think a lot of the issues our district is facing um are the same issues that our entire nation is facing. And it's really complicated when when we understand that when COVID happened is something that our generation hadn't faced before. And I think the implications of that aren't something we fully understand for a very long time. So it's really about what can we do now to make the right strides um for these kids and for these families? Um, there are attendance advocates um who reach out to families and would try to understand what the issue is um with why their child can't come to school. Um, I think accountability is important, but also when it's appropriate because there are children that have extenuating circumstances, things that are completely out of their control. So we don't want to necessarily punish them for those things. So we need to have people who are really to reach out and and understand individual situations to see how we can best meet those needs. Um, again, engagement with parents, uh, parent, uh, I'm a huge fan of Parentsware. Uh, with four kids, having that app that tells me the events. Um, I can send them notes saying my child is sick today. That's why they're not there. I think we can continue to utilize apps like that. Um, so yeah, like the pre, the preschool program is amazing. Also, there's bridges uh at by the high school. And it's giving children, kids who learn differently, an opportunity to go and receive that education in a way that works for them. And they have so many options, you know, they can use it as supplemental classes that they're, oh, thank you.
Jim Jordan.
The board developed two goals for the incoming superintendent back in August of twenty twenty-three. And those were academic achievement, which is focusing on the basics of reading, writing and math and getting students up to grade level. The second one was student behavior. And that was on there due to its impact on academic achievement and teacher satisfaction and retention. So what the board did is we supported hiring uh assistant principals in both our elementary schools, primarily for behavior, but it also had a secondary improvement in in academics. Um, we re-implemented higher expectations in teacher professional learning communities, PLCs, post-COVID, and monitoring student progress by reviewing performance data, interim testing, formative assessments. And then we're using that data to inform how our teachers are instructed and helping the teachers with uh professional development. We encouraged development of summer school programs when funded that focused on academic content. On student behavior, we had also, you know, the the primary thing was hiring those assistant. On student behavior, we had also, you know, the, the, the primary thing was hiring those assistant principals. And we've also supported all the principals in the school to recalibrate, recalibrate student behavior expectations and hold students accountable. And I believe in the culture of accountability with our students.
Okay, new question. This is for all the candidates. We will be starting with Julie Thies. How would you prioritize limited funding in the current uncertain environment? How would you prioritize limited funding in the current uncertainty environment?
Well, that's what work sessions are for. Um, the board gets to work with the administration. They get to tell us what's most important as far as what, how much money we even get and we allocate where it needs to go. There's, there's, we have to pay the staff, uh, we have to pay, I mean, we have to pay the bills as far as, uh, the lights and the water and the power and, and believe me, I've seen the register and there's a long list of things that go out every month. Um, we have to put money aside for repairs. We have to keep, uh, seven percent in the bank just for months to have. Um, we, we have to allocate it the way the people that are actually spending the money to see that it needs to be done. We've currently gone through, uh, curriculum changes, so we've, we've gotten that taken care of. We've got a lot of replacements for our curriculum. Um, and we need to make sure that we keep the most important, uh, curriculum as far as math and science and reading and, uh, all of that. We need to keep that first and, yeah, so.
Deanne Whitehead.
Um, I, I like to hear from people. I like to have conversations. And so, um, this question will be something that I would handle. As it came up, um, I would wanna talk to the admin and the folks that they know where the money needs to go. Um, but for me, our children's education is the most important. We need to keep them excited about school. We need to keep them in school. Their reading and the math levels are like, Megan said, they're still incredibly low. And so I feel like we still need to make sure that we're emphasizing, um, the focus is on our children's education for their future.
Megan Crostiner, CAO.
Um, I would wanna make sure that we preserve, preserve our core mission, which is to educate the students. Um, you know, we, I wanna, I wanna make sure that we're retaining teachers and we're not increasing class size. Um, I wanna make sure we still allow for a well, well-rounded education, you know, still allow, um, alternate pathways needed. And, you know, make sure we still have SDET, um, experiences available. Um, I would also reach out to parents and students. I will, I wanna hear what their priorities were also, as well as talking to the administration.
Julie, here.
Um, I would say my priority would be ensuring that a child's basic needs are met first. And I understand that funding is, is complicated. I understand that applying for grants is quite a process. I would be interested in, in finding ways to maybe make applying for grants easier. If that's something we have any control over, I would want to look at all those options and really, um, expand our view on how we can get more funding to our schools. Um, funding depends on attendance, but that's another way that attendance really plays a role here. So talking to the parents, finding ways to get the kids excited about school, finding ways to make them feel confident when they are at school, making sure that, you know, they have food, they have shelter, they don't come to school scared and worried. And that they're showing up to school because they feel safe and they, then they are learning and our, our attendance is going up because of that. That provides more funding to the schools. Um, and so, you know, as a mother and as people, as someone who has worked with kids in, in my life, uh, the right thing to do is to really take care of those child's basic needs because that is the foundation for success.
Jim Jordan.
I think, uh, there is a high level of certainty in the state of Oregon education budget at this time. Uh, the North Bend School District proposed budget number for 2025, 2026, sixty-six million for that school year. And our budget meetings start tomorrow. Now, where there is uncertainty is the federal funding. Uh, and that's for our title programs, Title I, reading, and other, other title programs. And for the North Bend School District, this is 1.6 million dollars. And, um, this will be a topic of discussion, uh, for the budget planning process. But, uh, the state certainly got a hand and I, I urge the state of Oregon to reconsider their position on DEI so that our students are not negatively impacted by the loss of federal funding for critical programs. Uh, our focus as the board has been on academic achievement and preparing our students for the future. And this is gonna include, uh, funding the basics of education, that's reading, writing, math, science, and, uh, funding CTE programs. As far as the budget goes, we, we have a great team in our business department headed by the assistant superintendent that puts that together. Uh, he always asks us to have seven percent ending balance and it is run in a very fiscally conservative.
Anna Hewitt. Well, I suspect that budgets will be where I'll spend the most time soaking up information and learning. Funding streams are always kind of tricky to learn and understand and some money can be spent certain ways. Um, I think about being fiscally responsible and learning what the money is meant for is pretty important. But if we focus on education with children, I think that it, with the help of the teams that work, that's why we have budget committees and work sessions, we'll be able to figure out the best route for money. I suspect that if we, um, follow our strategic plan and remain mission and vision driven, we're gonna focus on where the budget needs to go. I'm, I'm sure it's gonna be tough getting, um, you know, everything funded that needs to be funded will be hard. But there's always ways to be fiscally responsible and still, uh, be inventive with funding streams, grants, things like that. So I'm willing to do the work and learn, and I know that that's going to be probably a lot of work.
We have a new question and we start with Deanne Whitehead. What endorsements have you received that you are proud to accept?
I haven't, I haven't received any true endorsements from any big companies around town. Um, I am endorsed by the Democrat, um, in the Democrats of Coos County. Um, I have not always been a Democrat. I was non-affiliated for a really long time. But are my views and the way that I work, I work with people. I like to get folks' opinions. I like to hear from all sides. I like to be a middleman. I'm very good at playing double advocate. I can understand where both sides are coming from. Um, and so I think that's really the only true endorsement that I've had.
Megan Crostiner, CAO.
I, um, I, I also have endorsement from the Democratic Party of Coos County. Um, I, I'm, I, I'm proud of that endorsement. Um, I think that I, I spoke, um, to a bunch of the members and I put forward what my plan was for the school district and what I wanted to accomplish. And, um, it seemed to resonate with a lot of people. And so it was, it was a good way for me to, um, kind of explain who I was and what I wanted to do. And they were very open to it and I got their endorsement. Um, I also, I don't know if I call this endorsement, but I think there's also a, a pact that's endorsed me that is, um, that I think is really important for a community. Um, it's not Republican, it's not Democrat, it's, um, going forward, um, in for Coos County. And what it is, is it's trying to find, it's trying to get moderates into this non-partisan, um, elected positions. People that are running for the right reasons and have, you know, the ability and the wherewithal and want to, to make a difference. And so they also have, uh, endorsement for this one.
Julie Hale.
Um, I was also endorsed by the Democrats of Coos County. Um, I actually found out about this opportunity to run for school board, uh, through my friend Anna. And she had posted something about running and I said, what's this all about? And she gave me the information. Um, when I came to start meeting different people, I shared my platform. I said, I'm really passionate about kids in special education. I'm really passionate about children who, um, are vulnerable and need help meeting their basic needs. That's my, those are my goals. That's what I'm passionate about. And they said, okay. There was never any time that I was asked to alter my platform or to include buzzword issues that are in our community, though I do have strong opinions about those things. But I was never asked to change my platform in any way. It was more of a supportive, like, I've never ran a campaign before. They know how to run a campaign and they gave me the guidance to run a campaign. Um, I am an un-affiliated candidate. I do not belong to a Republican party. I do not belong to the Democratic party. I was actually a lifelong Republican. I grew up in the South. Um, and a few years ago, I felt that I did not see a party that represented me very well. And through things polarizing and polarizing and polarizing, I felt the most comfortable to step back and be unaffiliated, which has given me the opportunity to see the pros and cons of both parties. There, both parties have strengths and weaknesses. And I think I have a unique view to be able to not be afraid, I guess, to talk to people who are very different from me. I have a lot of experience with that. Thank you.
Jim Jordan.
Okay, yes, I'm endorsed by the Republican Party of Coos County. Um, Boomer Wright also endorsed, uh, four folks running for reelection, me included. And, uh, Boomer's on the education committee. And, uh, I would say that the superintendent and the board leadership, which rotates, have lunch with Boomer probably three or four times, almost quarterly. And Boomer kinda wants to, you know, a pulse check, what's happening in the schools, how can I help you? And Boomer listened to us over a period of years and said, you know, this, the student behavior piece is huge. And it really is, uh, it's interfering with student learning. And it was kind of in the context that, that several teachers put it pretty well. It was pretty much that one to two percent of the students continually disrupt the class and interfere with the learning of the remaining twenty. And so Boomer was, uh, came and had a listening session. We gathered up folks, uh, from the different schools and they gave feedback on that. So while Boomer is also a Republican, I would like to think that Boomer endorsed me because, uh, endorsed the board running for reelection because of our passion for student behavior and, uh, that he was willing to step in.
Anna Hewitt.
I am also endorsed by the Democratic Party. Uh, and I appreciate that because I ran ones before and I'll tell you, figuring out how to do this is not very easy. It takes a lot. And so although I, um, was not registered as Democrat, when I decided to run, uh, they, they came and asked me about my platform and I really am glad that they decided to endorse me. Uh, I also have been endorsed by Barbios, who works with me on another, another board in the community and has witnessed the advocacy and stuff that I do in the community. Uh, on my campaign page, there are several letters of recommendations, um, from folks like Greg Acosta and realtors and other people in the community who know what it is I do and who I am within the community.
Julie Thies.
Do you want to repeat the question again?
What endorsements have you received that you are proud to accept?
My endorsement that I'm most proud to accept are the ones of my family, my kids, white support from the state school district staff. Um, I'm endorsed by the Coos County Republican Central Committee, Boomer Wright, David Broxman, the Right to Life, and Parents' Rights in Education.
We've started last time. So this will go to Megan Crostiner, CAO. A new question. What steps do you think need to be taken to foster a safe environment conducive to learning in schools?
Well, bullying is an issue in our school district. Um, we saw that when we were working on the strategic plan and we read some of the, um, surveys that the students filled out. Um, there, there was a good number of them that, that either they themselves, um, experienced it or saw it happen. Um, so some of the ways that I, that we are addressing it, and I think it should be addressed, is there's a big focus now on social emotional learning, which is great. They did have that when I sent school and they really should have. Um, as a parent, I, I get the handout, so they send it to kids and I bring them home and I put them right up on the fridge because, I mean, it's good information for everyone. I mean, let's, let's learn about kindness, honesty, empathy, you know, all these things are so important and, and make up so much of a child's, you know, just who they are. And so I really appreciate the focus on that. Um, so, and I, I, I think that also there's a lot of, um, supports that are in place, um, there's around the district for, um, mental behavioral health too. And so we wanna make sure we have those supports available to the students so that those can be addressed. Um, the other thing too is I think it'd be, it's interesting to have like maybe a, a collaborative problem-solving system for like systemic issues and have everyone involved, including the students in that. Um, but for specific instances and issues, then I think we need to follow, have a quote-unquote that is followed clearly and consistently.
Julie Hale.
Um, I, I also have understood that there are a lot of bullying issues. And I know that through my own track experience with some bullying, there are people at the middle school who try very hard to advocate for those kids. She knew what adults that she could go to and whatever help she could receive, which, which is fantastic. But it's still such a widespread, spread issue. I do see the intent there from the staff who are trying to find ways to address it, but we're gonna have to dig deeper and continue to work on that. Um, a lot of this is, is a mindset thing. It, it can be, we don't always know, you know, whether it's the child being bullied or what, or the, or the bully itself, what their life is like outside of school, um, what they hear, what they see. And so we also have to, um, be an example of inclusivity and how to respect people who are different from you. You don't have to like everyone. You don't have to be their best friend, but you can be respectful and inclusive. And that's something that as adults in the community, we can demonstrate that to those children. Um, again, basic needs, if, if a child, if a child is showing up to school stressed out, they're more likely to bully. Um, I know that there have also been issues brought up that I've heard from parents about building maintenance and, and security on that. So what can we do to make the building safer, repairs, uh, locks on doors? What, what else can we do to ensure that our children are safe when they go to school? Um, and this is, okay, thank you.
Jim Jordan.
Can you reread, reread that question, please?
But what steps do you think need to be taken to foster a safe environment conducive to learning in the schools?
Okay, I think the two areas we're focusing on is school safety and student behavior and discipline. Uh, the board identified a need for a second, uh, SRO, School Resource Officer for enhanced safety and security. We currently have, well, we had one. A district administrator worked in conjunction with the North Bend Police Department to get a $600,000 grant to fund a second position. And that second SRO showed up in, uh, April of 2025, last, well, this month. Um, you know, the School Resource Officer is also there to develop positive relationships with the students. You know, we have four schools that are in three separate locations, so, um, one of my goals is to work to getting a third SRO. Um, the second thing, student behavior, I've talked about a bit and it's due to its impact on academic achievement and teacher job satisfaction and retention. You know, we, we supported hiring two more principals at our two elementary schools and, uh, also supported principals to recalibrate student behavior expectations and hold students accountable. We also had a check-in, checkout program at the elementary schools, which handles some of, some, some of the discipline programs. And there's also a tier-three classroom where students who need additional help can get it.
Anna Hewitt.
So I believe this has began, um, starting with the strategic planning. We had a room full of people discussing this and two things that really rose to the top were social safety and social emotional learning, which we're, we're hearing because, um, all behaviors, all disruptions are not just, um, a child is having, uh, negative behaviors. So that social emotional learning piece, having the mental health in North Bay, um, being, teaching those things at early ages and helping the kids with the social emotional learning, I think will help with that. I, I think that this goes back to culture too. Kids need to arrive ready to learn. Um, part of that is not being bullied. So I think a safe environment is, um, most conducive for learning. And, you know, my son was beat up at school this year. It was huge. It was horrific. Uh, but we have cameras and we had staff that were equipped and on it. And afterwards, they followed up the check-in, check-out and that emotional piece so that he didn't, you know, respond. And so I think that this has started, but I think those are the two things that should be focused on.
Julie Thies.
So address children's needs to be able to go to school and feel safe. Um, we need to make sure that our staff are trained well to be able to, um, handle the kids, to be able
handle the kids, to be able to have the tools necessary to deal with the children. Um, kids are very stimulated, stimulated a lot with a lot of different things with, um, technology. I think a lot of it has to do with, uh, phones and computers and the distractions that they cause for kids. And if we can reduce that stimulation for kids, there's a lot of like mental illnesses going around as far as, um, their abilities to cope with different things. There's a lot of pressure to fit in, to meet needs, to be like everybody else and stereotyping. And I think kids aren't feeling safe for those reasons. And so if we can find ways to meet the kids where they are emotionally and the staff to be able to recognize that and to meet them in that, it will help.
Deanne Weyman.
Um, I think children deserve to feel safe in the schools. Um, and so I fully agree that we do need to work on the bullying problem, which it sounds like the board is currently doing. I love to see that happening. I love to see that there's changes in policies that are, um, proactive and helpful for the children. Um, I, I really like the emotional regulation. I think that's fantastic. Like Megan said, that wasn't in our schools. Uh, we weren't taught how to emotionally regulate. Um, and I, I think that's, it's great. I love seeing stuff like that and I would love to see those continue. And I would love to work with teachers and admin, parents and, um, see like if we can find the root cause of some of the, at least some of the bullying and see if we can, um, use that to help adjust even more.
And now we have a new question. Right. You've started, I must have.
You already did, yeah.
Okay. So this will go to, uh, Julie Hale. What are some of the moral values that you intend to support on the board?
Um, respect, I think is huge. I think that the, the, the basis for having a, a well-unified community is respecting each other, whether you agree with them or you don't. Um, as adults, that can be challenging. It can be really hard to navigate at times. But as we are at least open-minded to other people's beliefs and morals and things that they hold dear to their heart, we may not agree, but we can at least put ourselves in their shoes to understand why they feel the way they feel. So empathy, respect, kindness. And I think within the context of being on the school board is the, um, the intent to protect the children of our community. And I think protecting the vulnerable, um, is a, a good, it's a good moral compass. I think if you're always looking to help those in need, those who are struggling, it often leads you to find, uh, new depths of compassion that you may have not felt before. So I really think at the, at the start of it, it really comes down to having respect first and then having an open mind second.
Jim Jordan.
It's a great question. I would agree with Julie. I think respect is huge. And, uh, I guess one thing is I operate by the, you know, all students in North Bend are welcome and accepted as they are. And all students should respect each other and they should respect the teachers. Uh, one thing I think that's been lost in the years is students' respect for teachers. And I think it has really contributed to, uh, a lack of satisfaction with some of the teachers and retention. So we did do a strategic plan and we, we talked about some of the characteristics we would like to see in a portrait of a graduate. And, um, you know, I, I think that we should treat our neighbor as our self, you know, as you'd want to be treated yourself. Kind of the golden rule there. I think that's a great way to conduct yourself. One of the traits I really like in life, but I think you have to, for is perseverance. So a lot of times you'll have a goal that may be quite a bit, quite far away. It may require education, training. But, uh, and you may, you may not succeed in your first attempt at being able to persevere. Um, is, is a huge thing. And when it came to hiring people, um, people that had perseverance, uh, really stand out. So I, because I think they're achievers and they're problem solvers. So.
Anna Hewitt.
In my parenting, I tell my kids often that your moral compass is the one thing that you have. I think honesty is probably the biggest for me. If I say something, I mean it. If I say I'll do it, I'll do it. I think that that has gotten me far in life and it's important to our students. I mean, respect for yourself and for others is of course paramount because if you don't think you're going to just have breakdown in your life. Empathy is important. Um, I think there's so many that are important, but I almost, I, I think that if we rely on honesty, we will get so far.
Julie Hayes.
Um, in today's world, you hear a lot of, um, be kind. So I think kindness. So as a faith-based believer, um, I think kindness is the most important part of dealing with other people. Um, Ephesians four thirty-two says, be kind to one another, tender-hearted, forgiving one another, as God in Christ forgave you. So I think that's something that's super, um, important for everybody to just be kind. And, um, be compassionate. And if you can address people with kindness, compassion and grace and have curiosity instead of, um, maybe getting upset with the issues, um, addressing it with kindness is definitely going to be the best.
Deanne Weyman.
Um, respect and empathy are a couple of the big ones for me. Um, I like to, I like to feel respected. Everybody I talk to, they also like to feel respected. You all like to feel heard. I like to feel heard. I like to be able to have conversations with people and hear them, actively listen to their concerns, actively listen to, um, what they think is going great or what they don't think is going great. And I want to hear that from teachers. I want to hear from students. I want to hear from parents. I feel the more we actively listen to the folk that we're talking to, the more we can get out of each other, the better conversations we have, the better conclusions we can come to, we're more likely to be able to come to a consensus, an agreement, even if we didn't agree with each other in the beginning. Um, and the same goes with respect. If you respect each other, you're more able to have a good conversation that leads you somewhere instead of going out into the distance and everybody just end up with a conversation mad at each other. Um, all children deserve to feel safe and respected. They all deserve to feel welcome and be in a welcome atmosphere. And so I feel that goes a long way. Thank you.
Megan Crostener Cagil.
Uh, I'm, I'm gonna echo a lot of what was said here. You know, I believe honesty is really important, um, to be honest and transparent. You know, as a board member, it's paramount. Um, also the respect is huge. You know, you have to, if you want people to listen to you, you need to listen to them. And you need to be able to let, you know, listen within active, actively and, you know, take it in and actually consider it. Um, the other thing I bring is my work ethic. I mean, I, there's not, there's nothing I can think of that I prioritize more than my children's education. I mean, this is something where I will be prepared. I will be doing the work. I'll be looking into it. I'll be coming up with ideas. Um, I would bring this, this work ethic to this position because I, I care about this more than just about anything else I can think. Um, I also stand up for what I believe in. I, I, one of my morals is that I'm not going to be swayed just because everyone thinks differently than me. So if I have a strong opinion and I've listened to them and I still consider what I think to be right, I will not leave out that position for the person.
Okay, we have a new question and this goes to you, Jim Jordan. Recently, the federal government sent a Dear Colleague letter warning that it would pull funding, pull funding from schools that have diversity, equity and inclusion programs. How do you see this affecting the district and what, if anything, would you change in school district policy to respond?
I touched on this a little bit, uh, earlier. Uh, the federal funding that's at stake, it's for our title programs, Title one, uh, through ten different ones. Um, and there's one point six million dollars involved in that. And, uh, if federal funding is removed through that, you know, those critical programs won't happen. The students that are being served by them won't happen. And it will likely involve, uh, teachers being let go or classified to be let go. So it's, it's a very big deal. Um, I guess I would urge the state of Oregon to reconsider their position on DEI. So our students are not negatively impacted by the loss of federal funding. You know, our board has been focused on academic achievement and student behavior, prepare, preparing our students for the future. And, and when the state pursues DEI, there's an opportunity cost to that because we're not educating our students in the core things they should be educated.
Anna Hewitt. You know, I came in and talked to the superintendent. This is one of the questions I have for him because I was very curious about it as well. Sometimes we have to rely on those that are in positions to do their job. And one of the things that the superintendent said is that, you know, we're still following state rules. We're still waiting. It's not, um, you know, a given. I think sometimes we have unintended consequences and we're not sure how it's going to play out. So at this point, I think we pay attention to the rules and watch them and watch the laws and we have their conversations with our superintendent.
Julie Hayes.
I'm very proud of the superintendent that we hired, um, recently, uh, because he is very educated and he continues to educate himself with the laws of Oregon and how to run the school district. Um, he's doing a great job and, uh, the board did a great job in hiring this superintendent. Um, I think with the money that's coming from the federal government to our schools is probably going to be in jeopardy. Um, I don't know what's going to happen. Nobody knows what's going to happen. Uh, I think that we have an opportunity and that presents itself. The school district could sign a, um, compliance letter to the federal government in order to continue with our federal funding outside of Oregon. Um, the press conference that was held by the Department of Justice uh, a couple of weeks ago, she mentioned that school districts, individual school districts could comply and be left out of the lawsuit if they pursue it.
Deanne Weyman.
Um, I feel like there's no good way to answer this question. I would love to uphold DEI, but I also don't want to see our students suffer for, um, upholding something. And so I, I have no good answer for this question. Um, I, I don't want to see the kids suffer, but also like my moral grounds of DEI is important. Diversity, equity and inclusivity is, um, important to me. Um, we, that's, we have kept so many people out of jobs just because of their race or the color of their skin. And I don't think that we should go back from that. Um, but our children are important. And so these are hard decisions that we are going to have to make. I, um, I fully believe we do need to follow the policies that are set in front of us. And so if the state says this is what you need to do, then this is what we need to do. That's the job of the board, the staff, follow the policies.
Megan Crostener Cagil.
I feel like I have so many things, I've been running out of time on this one. Um, you know, the big thing is, is Oregon schools, they need to follow state education policy, not federal. There, there is no requirement that we follow federal education policy. They can withhold funds from us, but it is not the law. We have to follow what the Oregon Department of Education says and that is what we're doing. Um, anything other than that would be in violation of our state laws. Um, also, I mean, we hear DEI all the time and it drives me to the wall. Please someone define it for me. I mean, equity, wheelchair ramp, should we get rid of those? I mean, the letter does not list what they're talking about. How do you comply with something that's so ambiguous and no one even has a clue what it means? I mean, it, it drives me up the wall actually that we have to have this conversation. So, um, I, I also talked to the superintendent, um, no changes are needed at this time. And I do, I would like to say, because I am very concerned about Title one. If our funding did get pulled, we do not have to end those programs per se. We can divert other funding to do those types of measures. So the budget can be reworked. Um, but yeah.
Julie Hale. Um, I, I echo a lot of what's been said. It is a, it is a, a topic that people are very passionate and opinionated about, as they should be. This is something that touches people to a deep level. I want to talk about a few things that DEI covers. Um, it covers special education. It covers disabled people, disabled children in this context. It, it is also veterans are included under DEI. Children of veterans are going to, or the children of veterans will be affected because veterans fall under the umbrella of DEI. Um, children who are born into poverty, that falls under DEI. So we are talking about a group of people who are very vulnerable, who often have been put in these situations or born into a certain, a certain, uh, life that they have no control over. I am very passionate about preserving DEI. However, if I'm elected as a board member, that's not my decision to make. And I would advise people who are concerned about that, something I'm concerned about too, to take that to your local representatives, take it to your state representatives, that they hold those powers. We don't hold those powers. Okay? Our job will be to uphold the state laws, to uphold whatever policy and procedures that are coming from the district. And I am able and commit to following those laws and policies because that is the job of a nonpartisan board member.
Okay, um, we have a new question. This will go to Deanne Hewitt, correct? So the question is, what programs that have been implemented recently at North Bend School are you most excited about?
Most excited about? Uh, I love the check-in, check-out program. It's been amazing. Mr. Brandon Metty and, um, the folks that are out at the middle school have changed the course for my child and for kids. So I love the check-in, check-out program. Um, I'm a pretty big fan of the middle learning center. And this year they did something kind of a little bit different at the high school and had to mix some programs. And it's worked out well for my son. Um, I'm very excited about the adult ed program. Transitioning out to high school and you have a disability is very difficult. And, um, they used to have a program with Melissa Downs. She's gone now, but they still have a program with those kids go. My son goes to Goodwill. He goes to Genos. He, um, learns skills to work. He learns skills to live. So I think the adult ed program is pretty important to me.
Julie Hayes.
And it was what was the question?
What programs that have been implemented recently at North Bend Schools are you excited about?
Um, so I guess recently is perspective. Um, I think the CTE is the most um, interesting one. There's, there's nursing, there's electricians, or not, not electricians for the construction, the welding. Um, there's different ones that are available and the kids are learning trades. And so I think that one's probably the most interesting that I like.
Uh, Deanne Weyman.
I also really like that the CTE schools are things. I didn't learn that until recently and I was really excited to hear it. Our trade programs are very important. It's, um, not every student is going to be a doctor or a lawyer. Um, and a lot of them, they, they don't want to do that. That's not something they're interested in. But trade schools, they're a great alternative. Um, we need plumbers. We need electricians. We need all of that, all of those, um, trades. Like, I, I think they're exceedingly important, especially, um, they add to our community. Um, I'm sorry, I told the break. I mean, I just read, wait, I think I'll, I'll just leave it at that. I think the trade schools are fantastic and I would love to see those continue.
Megan Crostener Cagil.
Um, I think there's a lot of great programs. I'm not sure exactly when all of them were implemented. I, I know recently it's been great. A lot of extracurriculars are starting to come back, at least, um, to like the, uh, the grade schools. Uh, they started like Battle of the Books again, which is the, um, some of the other schools do that. Um, and I think they're doing a math club now too. And, um, I've talked to them maybe about trying to expand some chess because they're, they're doing that now in Cus Bay again, I believe, is a chess club. And there's some other stuff that's going on. Um, also like at high school, I, I'm, like everyone else, we have really great CTE programs and they're always looking for ways to even expand those. Um, one of the things that's interesting that we've looked at, um, like, they're talking about wanted, there's a key one, which is like they're talking about one that, well, there's the K one, which is great. Whenever we're there, um, they have a great shop program already. Um, and that kind of ties it then with SWOT too. Um, there's also, um, the dual credits where you can go and go to SWOT while you're a Shell High School student for free and start, if, if you want to go to community college, it's great. You either just stop there and then you've got a two-year degree or you can then take that and transfer to a four-year one and half your college paid for. Um, just, you know, all these things that allow for well-rounded education. There's also even, uh, ability to do like alternate pathways too. If you want, if you want to come up with your own proposal and propose it to the superintendent.
Julie Hale.
Um, yeah, I will echo a lot of what's been said. I also love the check-in, check-out room. I love the behavioral, uh, models and then things that they've implemented. Um, that's been a huge strength that I've seen in my son Jonah, especially this year. He came home and taught me the breathing eight exercise and how to calm himself down. Um, he goes into check out, check in, check out once or twice a day when he needs breaks from being overstimulated. I love that we are supporting all students. Um, I, I also, I love the pre-k program. I think that that is an amazing thing that has started. The Bridges program is really important, the trade programs, the clubs, and just having this variety and options. So that's how we get kids excited about school and that's also how we create a safe environment. Um, I appreciate that there are free breakfasts that, ooh goodness, not getting so tight, free breakfasts and free lunches. Um, that has been something I think is really important to preserve and I would love to see that move forward. I've also been really happy seeing more police officers when I show up to school. Um, I know that many parents who send their kids to school every day and with some of the violence that we are, um, experiencing as a nation, when we see those police officers standing outside the doors, whether you're dropping off or picking up, it makes you feel a lot better. Um, I greatly appreciate those officers and to protect those children and I want to see that and, and maybe strengthen that. Um, and I think that's a huge source of security, not just for the parents, but also for the children.
Jim Jordan.
Sure. Uh, a recent program started was Biddy Bulldogs, which is, uh, preschool at North Bay. Now there's two classes of that. North Bay was selected because when we compared Hillcrest to North Bay, there is a greater need for preparing kids for kindergarten coming out of the North Bay school system. The other thing we, you know, we supported was esports, which is video gaming. I didn't know there was such a thing till recently. And, uh, the board supported a grant for fifteen thousand dollars to refit a room with top-of-the-line computers, chairs, and, uh, uh, for, for gamers. And I have a gamer that, one of my sons is a gamer, not here tonight, but, uh, you know, uh, you just have to, it appeals, you just gotta get everyone into the school you can. And, uh, hey, gamers can make great equipment operators. There was a course at SWOT for equipment operating. So there's hope. Construction trains, the CTE is one of our great programs, um, in the, I really love the trade space. We need to have a broad offering to get students in there. It helps with attendance and graduation. School can't be all things to all students, but it has to be something to each of our students. And, and that is to say, there's gotta be something to grab their interest and make them want to go to school.
So do we have time for one more question or, uh, is there?
No closing statement.
I think this has been a great discussion. So, um, we will go into the two-minute closing statements from everyone. And I believe we start with Anna, or Julie Peace, correct? I think you started last time. Yep.
Um, so you do not have to be a great public speaker if we have a school board. Um, all you need to be able to do is be able to work as a team and that's what's most important. That's what I'm doing, working as a team. We've accomplished a lot. We've hired a new superintendent, which has brought calmness to the district and has solved a situation that we had had in the past. Um, and that was the work of the current sitting board and I'm pretty proud of that. Um, we're working with Boomer Wright to get things, um, taking care of the Salem the best we can to make our voices being heard. Um, there goes my train of thought.
Julie Wegman. Deanne Wegman.
I owe it to you.
You hear me out. Um, I am just, I'm looking forward to working with people. I have the time, I have the energy, and I have the passion. Um, I like having conversations. I enjoy having current conversations. I have life, finding middle ground. Um, and I just, I really enjoy working with people and I, I hope this is something that works out. And if it doesn't, I'll just have more time with my children. Thank you.
Megan Crostiner Jacob.
Well, so I started, you know, thinking about running for the board a couple of years ago, honestly. Um, as a parent of a kid at Hillcrest, you know, I kind of followed what the schools are doing and what's going on. Um, and honestly, my first thing was, and it was from, you know, this current board, was actually the superintendent search. Um, I'm pretty happy with who they ended up choosing. Um, I think he's great. I've spoken to them. I've spoken to other people and he's fantastic. However, he wasn't in their top three finalists that they presented to the parents. Um, instead, they had two finalists that a lot of parents took great umbrage to and they felt like, what is the board thinking? And so I was one of the people that went on Facebook and tried to, there was a lot of information out there at the time. There was news articles. There was tons of public information um, about these candidates that made them just unsuitable, um, for anyone you'd want leading your district. Um, so honestly, that is where it started for me. And after a lot of outcry from the parents, they went and they added who are current superintendent to the finalists. And, um, then luckily he was chosen. Sorry? Uh, but I'm talking, as a parent, this is, this is why I'm doing this. Because I felt that our school board was not looking out for the interests of our students and that is why I'm running. There's a lot of information in the newspaper about this and it was ignored or not looked at. It was neglected. And instead they just went with what other, the boards were doing.
Julie Hale.
Um, I, um, I want to express my appreciation for everyone who set this up and who's taken their time out to put together this forum and, or to care enough to come out and hear, um, what we have to say. I think that community involvement and knowing who is running for office and making sure that you vote and make your voice heard so you, um, can support your community better is so important. Um, I have learned a lot during this time. I have met some amazing people. I have been able to find new ways to serve and volunteer in the community that I look forward to continuing no matter what. Um, I am committed to being a team player. I'm committed to looking at the evidence, um, listening to professionals of the field related to whatever issue we are looking at and making those decisions that are best for our community with an objective eye and an open mind. I, um, I will add again that I think without a child's most basic innate needs, they cannot come to school to learn. And I will continue to advocate to find ways that are both, uh, smart for the budget, but that we can still prioritize how we can make sure that those kids, um, have the, an equal opportunity to receive a really good education so that they can have a good career no matter where they go, but hopefully they stay here, which is going, was just continue the legacy of, of what North Bend should be about. Um, I want to, um, um, continue to educate people and make sure that we can get real factual information out to the public, which will help them better make decisions for uh, their city or for who is holding, um, positions, um, in the leadership. Um, so I'm committed to, uh, continuing to find those ways and it would be an honor to serve you guys.
Jim Jordan.
Uh, in the four years I've been on the board, I'd like to share some of the accomplishments we've talked about. Our focus on academic achievement, student behavior, uh, school safety. We, we had a grant written to get a second on school resource officer here. Um, that's now here. The board also reinstated graduation requirements, uh, for students who voluntarily want to pursue a North Bend diploma, which starts with, uh, graduating class of twenty twenty-six. This diploma requires competency testing that was previously in place, uh, that was removed by the legislator with Senate Bill, uh, seven forty-four. And I believe if you, if you have a diploma available for those interested, that make, that can make that diploma more valuable to those students who get that. A five-year strategic plan, uh, was, was developed while we were here and thankfully a number of, uh, candidates were participating in that. That's great. The board hired the superintendent and we made a wonderful decision in our selection of Ben Swager. We gave this district a servant leader of goodness and he has been a great leader for our district. Um, the board also supported feasibility of building North Bend School salmon hatchery on Pony Creek on school property. This is gonna be a great learning opportunity for our students, uh, the community members and sportsmen. Um, we need to be educating our students to reach their highest potential. I have an aspirational vision for North Bend School District to be a destination for students and parents, student academics, the strength of our programs, music, career technical education, and athletics. It's been my pleasure to serve on the board these past four years and it's a great day of your board.
Anna Hewitt. Um, in closing, I'd like to ask for your support because I believe I can be an asset for the district. I represent a large portion of our district demographic. We're a middle-class, Native American family whose children currently access school, um, assistance through IEPs. I also represent a large portion of our community. I'm a homeowner, a volunteer, and a community advocate. As an active parent, I've been involved. I have seen where the fractures and successes are in the district. And I am firmly blessed with great relationships with educators and staff who work with my children. I know I would believe you're listed to the staff that have the training skill and historical knowledge to help make educated discussions that will benefit our decision-making. I also know I will give a research apart to make these hard decisions. I want to be part of the North Bend School Board to make something that's good become great for our kids.
And we said we would end at seven forty-five and I think we did really well. I thank you for all of you who operated so much.